Good morning. The House Education Committee will come to order. First, I want to welcome members of the Senate Early Learning and K-12 Committee, as well as members of the public, both in person and online. Before we begin, I will review a few matters of protocol as the managing chair of this proceeding. This meeting is scheduled to conclude at 9:00 a.m. In order to hear from as many people as possible who wish to testify on the initiative to the legislature, I ask House and Senate members to refrain from asking questions of the public. Members may ask questions of nonpartisan House and Senate staff following the full briefing of the measure. Paper has been provided at each seat for members to write any questions that occur to you during the staff briefing. For those who are called upon to testify, please note that the use of props or visual aids when testifying is a violation of House rules and will not be permitted. The testimony timer is set for two minutes. When the light turns green, you may begin your testimony. The light will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds left, so please begin to wrap up your remarks. And then, when the light turns red, please conclude your comments. The chair will also remind testifiers to use respectful language as you comment on the measure, and I remind the seated audience in House Hearing Room A to be respectful of those who are testifying. Testimony should focus on the substance of the initiative and should not call into question the motives of others. Audible or visible expressions of support or opposition, such as clapping, booing, or holding signs, is also a violation of House rules and will not be permitted. In general, the chair will seek to alternate the hearing testimony between those who support the initiative and those who do not. And I see that we have several who have signed in "other." The first row of seats is reserved for people who have been called to testify after those who are testifying have concluded their remarks. I will now turn to Chair Wellman for a few comments about what we hope to achieve through this public hearing.
Thank you so much, Representative Santos. And I would also like to say a few words about the hearing. We all know that family members are every child's first teachers. And I think we can agree that creating an educational system that welcomes and embraces parents and guardians as partners in the education of their children is crucial. State and federal law already grant parents and guardians many rights in furtherance of creating this partnership between our schools and parents. However, it's become clear that it's confusing to understand the full scope of parental rights that already exist because they're not easily accessible or published in one space. I believe you'll hear from staff in their briefing how probably over 90% of the rights included in this initiative are already current law. But they're spread throughout many statutes and federal laws. I believe staff have prepared a side-by-side showing this information, and that will be made available to the public. In fact, two years ago, I worked with staff to create a booklet that organized all of these existing rights according to subject matter in order to make this information more accessible, and that is also available to the public. I think this initiative can just be one more tool to help parents better understand their existing rights. And if the language of this initiative creates any new confusion related to these rights, we stand ready to work to clear up any ambiguities. So thank you for allowing me to speak. And shall we call the first panel?
Absolutely. Would you do the honors, Chair Wellman?
Thank you very much. And I don't know whether you are going—
Oh, actually, I beg your pardon. We're going to start with staff briefing.
Oh, there we go. No.
Thank you. So we will welcome both the House OPR and Senate Committee Services staff to please brief the contents of the initiative to the legislature.
Great.
Thank you, and good morning, Madam Chairs and Committee Members. For the record, my name is Ethan Moreno, nonpartisan staff to the House Education Committee. Glad to be with you this morning, and I will let my colleagues introduce themselves.
I'm Ailey Cotto, and I'm staff to the Senate Early Learning and K-12 Education Committee.
Megan Wargaki, staff to the House of Representatives Education Committee.
In keeping with our usual practices, we'll begin with a brief overview of background information, summarize the initiative, and then, of course, respond to your questions. Additionally, my colleagues and I have prepared a reference table for the initiative that is in your EBB. The table, which we will use shortly, includes the initiative's provisions and information that is supplemental to what is included in the House and Senate bill analyses that have been prepared. We're also prepared, if necessary, to respond to any questions that you asked during the meeting with written follow-ups afterwards. So with that, we'll begin. The governance of Washington's public school system is a shared responsibility between the state and 295 school districts. The legislature and state agencies, including the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and the State Board of Education, establish requirements for school districts. But locally elected school district boards of directors are responsible for the operation of their respective districts. Washington's public school system also includes charter schools and state tribal education compact schools. These schools have separate laws for their governance and operation but are subject to requirements made applicable to them by the legislature and state agencies. Also of note, the Washington State School Directors Association, or WASDA, is a state agency that provides advice and assistance to the locally elected school board directors. WASDA is charged with developing model policies and procedures addressing a broad range of administrative and educational issues that school district boards of directors may choose to adopt. And in some cases, school districts are required by law to adopt model policies of the WASDA. WASDA's model policies and procedures, when adopted by school districts, play a significant role in the governance and operation of public schools and school districts. Examples of issues addressed in WASDA model policies and procedures include making student records available in an orderly and timely manner to students and parents, course design and selecting and adopting instructional materials complying with nondiscrimination requirements, and responding to student injury or illness. So I'll now direct your attention to the screens and the previously referenced table that I mentioned. We'll use the table to organize our remarks this morning and provide you with more expansive background information, but we will focus our comments on the initiative's provisions. Also, just a little disclaimer, please note that while the table is intended to be informative, it is not intended to be an exhaustive reference of all potentially applicable legal and policy citations. And with that, I'll turn to Ailey.
Each of the 15 declared rights in the initiative apply to parents and legal guardians of public school children younger than 18. Public school has the same meaning as an existing state law, which means common schools, charter schools, and certain other schools having a curriculum below the college or university level. Starting with the first right regarding access to materials, the initiative provides parents with the right to examine the textbooks, curriculum, and supplemental material used in their child's classroom. Moving to public school records, the second right is to inspect their child's public school records and to receive a copy within 10 business days of a written request. Certain procedural requirements are included, and public school records is defined to include a number of different types of records, such as academic, vocational counseling and screening records, medical or health records, discipline and attendance records, and any other student-specific files. Next, there are three rights related to medical services and treatment. The third right is to receive prior notification when medical services are being offered to their child except where emergency medical treatment is required. The fourth right is to receive notification when any medical service or medication have been provided to their child that could result in any financial impact to health insurance or co-payments. The fifth right is to receive notification when the school has arranged directly or indirectly for medical treatment that results in follow-up care beyond normal school hours. Moving to two rights related to criminal action and law enforcement, the sixth right is to receive immediate notification if a criminal action is deemed to have been committed against their child or by their child. The seventh right is to receive immediate notification if law enforcement personnel question their child, except in cases where the parent has been accused of abusing or neglecting the child.
Turning to the eighth right that is declared, it is the right to receive immediate notification if their child is taken or removed from the public school campus without parental permission, including a stay at a youth shelter or a private host home for youth in need of temporary placement. The next declared right is to receive assurance that their child's public school will not discriminate against their child based upon the family's sincerely held religious beliefs. The tenth declared right in the initiative is the right to receive written notice and to have the option to opt their child out of student engagements that include questions about the child's sexual experiences or attractions, the family's beliefs, morality, religion, or political affiliations, mental health or psychological problems of the child or family member, and surveys, analyses, and evaluations subject to areas covered by the Federal Protection of People Rights Amendments. Student engagements subject to this right include surveys, assignments, questionnaires, role-playing activities, and recordings of the child. The eleventh declared right, which continues the notification and opt-out theme, is to receive written notice and to have the option to opt their child out of instruction on topics associated with sexual activity in accordance with comprehensive sexual health education requirements. The eighth declared right, the twelfth, is the right to receive a school calendar and any revisions to the calendar, which must be posted on the school's website. The thirteenth declared right is to receive a list of any required fee and its purpose and use, and how economic hardships may be addressed, either in writing or on the school's website. The fourteenth declared right is to receive a description of the school's dress code or uniform, either in writing or on the school's website. And the fifteenth and final declared right in the initiative is to be informed of their child's academic performance if it could threaten their ability to be promoted to the next grade level, and to be offered an in-person meeting with a teacher and the principal to discuss resources or strategies for academic improvement. This concludes our staff report on the initiative. I will note, of course, that there is a fiscal note that has been prepared. That fiscal note is in the EBB. And with that, we will conclude our remarks, and we are happy to respond to questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions of staff? Representative Ortiz— Before we begin, I should also just note before the members on the dais, as well as for the members of the audience, by pre-arrangement, if a House member asks a question, it will be responded by House staff. And if a Senate member asks a question, you can expect your response to be from Senate Committee Services. Representative Ortiz Self.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff, you know, as you may know, I am a school counselor. And as such, we adhere, not just I, but all educational staff adhere to two privacy acts, FERPA and, if applicable, HIPAA. So what I want to know is, and my colleagues, how do the provisions of this initiative differ from our adherence to FERPA and HIPAA?
Megan, would you like to take that one?
Yes. Max, if you could scroll to the second part of the table as well. So the Federal Educational Rights and Privacy Act, or FERPA, is federal law, and it defines education records as information recorded in any way that are directly related to a student and maintained by a public school or a party acting for the public school. There are six defined exceptions to education records. This includes records that are kept in the sole possession of the maker, used only as a personal memory aid, and not accessible or revealed to any other person except a temporary substitute for the maker of the record. There are no examples of education records provided in federal rules. However, the Privacy Technical Assistance Center website of the U.S. Department of Education's Student Privacy Policy Office provides the following examples of education records: grades, transcripts, class lists, student course schedules, health records, and student discipline files. Under the initiative, public school records are defined to include any student-specific files, documents, other materials that are maintained by the public school, including academic records, medical or health records, including mental health counseling records, records of vocational counseling, records of discipline, records of attendance, records associated with screening for learning challenges, exceptionalities, or plans related to supporting students with disabilities. You asked how the provisions of the initiative differ from FERPA in other ways. Besides the definition, differences include, in the initiative, the parents or guardians are expected to receive a copy of their child's record within 10 business days of submitting the written request, either electronically or on paper. And under FERPA, parents have the right to inspect and review their records of their minor student within 45 days of requesting access to the records unless this right is specifically revoked by a court order, statute, or other legally binding document. And FERPA also provides that if circumstances prevent a parent from exercising this right to inspect and review, the school must either provide the parent with a copy of the requested records or make other arrangements to the parent to access the records. In contrast, the initiative specifies that no charges may be imposed on a parent or legal guardian to receive records electronically, and charges for paper copies must be reasonable and set forth in the policies and procedures of the district. You also asked about HIPAA. HIPAA is the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act of 1996. There is a privacy rule that the federal government has used to implement that act. HIPAA applies to individually identifiable health information held by or on behalf of a health care provider that is a covered entity under HIPAA. HIPAA generally does not apply to health information in a record that is subject to FERPA. So if FERPA applies, HIPAA does not apply. There are cases in which HIPAA does apply to schools, although in most cases HIPAA doesn't apply to public schools because the school is not a HIPAA-covered entity or is a HIPAA-covered entity but maintains its student health information only in FERPA-covered education I may have lost the train of your full question. Did I answer your question, or—I was trying to get everything about HIPAA and FERPA in there?
Do we have other questions? Senator Peterson.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the table. It's helpful to see, since the initiative is all brand-new language, it's really helpful to see how it interacts with many statutes. There are a few specific protections, though, that we have enacted over the last few years that I'm not sure about the interaction with. So I have a few questions, Ailey. Does this initiative amend 7134-530, which is related to adolescent access to mental health treatment?
No. That statute is not amended. The initiative provisions are all in new language in a new section.
Okay. And does the initiative amend any other RCWs related to student access to health care-related services?
There are no existing statutes amended in the initiative.
Okay. Does this initiative amend RCW 700222, which provides privacy protections to certain types of health-related information and records?
No, it does not.
Okay. And does the initiative amend any other RCWs related to who has access to health care-related records that are held by a health care provider?
No.
Okay. Does the initiative amend 7415020, which allows certain youth to access host homes?
No.
Okay. And does the initiative amend RCW 1332A082, which allows certain youth to access licensed youth shelters?
It does not.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Peterson Esquire. Further questions? Senator Wilson.
Thanks so much, Chair Santos. Ailey, first, I want to thank staff for the briefing. And Ailey, some of the language in the initiative is written quite broadly and seems somewhat ambiguous in its reach and application to other state statutory provisions. Is there legal guidance related to amending another statutory—existing statutory provision without actually pulling that statute into the legislation itself?
So the Code Revisors Office publishes a bill drafting guide that is used in preparation for bills that are—to the Washington Legislature. The bill drafting guide does have a section titled "Amending Without Setting Fourth in Full: Amendments to Sections by Reference." The guide includes the following explanation. It says, "Article 2, Section 37 of the State Constitution provides no act shall ever be revised or amended by mere reference to its title, but the act revised or the section amended shall be set forth at full length." There's also Senate and House rules mirroring that constitutional provision. The purpose of that constitutional provision is to inform the legislature and the public as to the nature and effect of proposed and enacted statutes.
Thank you. Thank you. Further questions? Senator Nobles.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Ailey, I do have a question. It seems that the language in the initiative actually conflicts with some of the laws that we have in place protecting young people. Could you let me know how a court would resolve that conflict that this initiative passes?
So I can't speak to what a court would decide. According to prior case law, if a court is confronted with a potential conflict between new legislation and an existing statute, a court could potentially use certain canons of statutory construction to resolve a conflict. Canons of construction is a system of rules or maxims that can be used by a court to interpret statutes. There are a number of different canons that a court may use. One canon is that if a statute appears to conflict, they must be reconciled to give effect to each of them. Another canon is that if there's a conflict between a general provision and a specific provision, the specific provision prevails. In other words, the more specific provision may be considered an exception to the general statute.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, staff. I'm sure there may be some further questions in follow-up, but we are here to hear from the people. So Senator Wellman, would you kindly call the first panel forward?
Thank you very much. The first panel will be Jim Walsh, Dawn Land, and Monica Spence. If you're here, come to the table. And if you are remote—I think everyone's here.
Yes. And if you are online, you will receive an invitation to join as a panelist. Please do accept the invitation, and when you are in the Zoom room, turn on your camera and mute yourself until your name is called again. In the meantime, welcome. Please proceed.
Thank you, Representative Santos, Representative Rude, Senator Wellman, and Senator Hawkins, and everyone here in this joint committee. Good morning. For the record, my name is Jim Walsh. I am a state representative from the 19th District. So Representative McIntyre has the duty of serving with me from that part of the state. And I am also the person who filed Initiative 2081 with the Secretary of State. Engaged Parents Raise Healthy and Happy Kids. The point of this initiative is to engage parents and grandparents and legal guardians in the upbringing of their children. As Senator Wellman noted in her opening remarks, there is some confusion among parents, among people, about what rights they have as parents with engagement—to engage—with the education and the care of their children. And what this initiative seeks to do is clarify those rights and let parents know in plain, straightforward terms what they can expect, what they can do, what they can know in raising their children. And it's the knowing that is the most important part of this, in my opinion. We want parents to be engaged and be confident that they can know what's going on with their minor children. And I believe that if we do that more effectively, we will see children in this state who themselves are more engaged. And this initiative has been drafted carefully so that it does synchronize well with existing law, and in fact, doesn't change most existing law. It just lets parents and guardians know. Please vote yes, and please move this onto the floor where we can put it into law very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Ma'am, please begin, and start with stating your name, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Dawn Land, and I'm here to ask our legislature to approve I 2081. In recent years, parents have watched this legislature enact laws eroding our rights and endangering our children. Last year, it was Senate Bill 5599, which was enacted despite thousands of parents testifying against it. To counter the overreach, I filed REF 101. As parents all over Washington State gathered signatures for R 101, we also gathered signatures for 2081. We came very close to the signatures, and when we fell for 101 and when we fell short, we fought twice as hard to reach the goal for this initiative. This legislature enacting 2081 would put the control of families back in the hands of parents where it belongs. For example, our schools currently have policy 3211. This policy requires teachers to keep secret from parents if their child expresses a gender identity at school. SB 5599 enables adults to prey on those vulnerable children and hide them from their parents in host homes. While 2081 codifies the rights of parents to raise their children without government interference, it also strengthens the rights of children because every child deserves to be protected by those who know them and love them best, their parents. Please listen to the people of Washington and vote in and make law 2081. Thank you.
Thank you. You may be seated. And Chair Wellman.
Yes, thank you. Monica Spence is neither online nor in the room, so we will go to Cade Walker. And I will call the following—Cade, there will be another panel. Matt Schulz, if you are here, please come to the front of the room or accept the prompt. Matt Schulz, Angela Steck, and Nashway Nishida will be the following. So, Cade, you're online, or you're here? Apparently, Cade is not available, so we have—I see Matt and Nashway. That's right. Go ahead.
Please proceed.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Madam Chairs, ranking members, and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Matt Schulz, and I'm the chief legal and civil rights officer for the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction here on behalf of OSPI. We have signed in as other on this initiative because, as Chair Wellman and others have said, much of what is included in this initiative is already required by state and federal law. However, some of the language is unclear, which could lead to confusion or implementation challenges at the local level. OSPI agrees that parents and guardians having access to student information encourages more involvement. Under current state law, parents and guardians already have access to a great deal of information as addressed in this initiative, including, but not limited to, examining curriculum and supplemental materials, academic and attendance records, notice of prohibition against discrimination, and notification and option to excuse children from instruction on sexual health. I 2081 does not supersede federal laws, such as FERPA, HIPAA, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, or Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972. To that end, local school districts will need guidance on implementing certain sections of the legislation, including, one, the difference between what existing federal and state law call "educational records" and what this initiative refers to as "public school records." Two, specific situations when parents need to be provided written notice and the option to opt a child out of student engagements. And three, parents' rights to receive notification about medical services under this initiative contrasted with patients' rights found in federal and state law. In order to provide that clarification, OSPI will need to work closely with the Department of Education and the Attorney General's Office. Based on these communications and local implementation, OSPI may need to seek additional clarification from the legislature in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Angela is online. Angela, can you turn your camera on?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Santos, Chair Wellman, and members of the committee. I'm Angela Steck, president of the Washington State PTA, the state's largest child advocacy association, representing 80,000 parents, families, and caregivers across our state. PTA has been advocating for the health, safety, and welfare of children and youth for 127 years. What began as a fight for child labor laws and the juvenile justice system has evolved to address the current needs of students, families, and schools. Family engagement is at the heart of PTA's mission. We agree parents and families play a critical role in their child's success and believe that all students have the right to a high-quality, equitable education. Family-school partnerships often focus on academic success, but whole child development is also an essential part of the conversation. At the same time, families and schools need to work together to support student mental and physical health and address student hunger and student safety. Our association believes that any parents' rights legislation must help to ensure safe, welcoming, supportive, and inclusive learning environments, must encourage more meaningful partnerships and communication with all families, and must not cause unintended harm or disproportionately impact or exclude certain students or families, especially LGBTQ+ students, students with disabilities— with disabilities, students in foster care or facing housing instability, or other historically targeted or marginalized groups. We read through this initiative and would like to share a concern that some of the language may conflict or cause confusion with current state statutes. For example, some current laws apply to age 13 and over, and this initiative applies to public schoolchildren younger than 18 years old. We also wonder about references to prior notification and immediate notification in multiple places in the initiative language, and how that might interact with existing statute. As any conflicts are identified in the future, we would hope these could be corrected by the legislature next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Naswe?
Good morning, Chair Santos, Wellman, and members of the committees. I'm Naswe Nishida, representing the Washington Education Association, and we are testifying other on Initiative 2081. WA believes parents, as well as guardians and other family members, have the right and the responsibility to partner with educators to ensure that students have the learning opportunities, resources, and supports for success. Educators look for ways to foster parent engagement. Parents are welcome and a crucial presence in schools, assisting educators in classrooms, celebrating student milestones, chaperoning field trips, leading parent associations, and actively engaging in many other ways with students and educators. In our analysis of Initiative 2081, we see that parents have had the right to review curriculum, classroom materials, textbooks, and visit their students' classrooms since 1979. Parents have also had the right to opt their students out of sexual health classes since 2007. We expect our members and all educators to continue observing the nondiscrimination laws that the state and federal governments have long had enacted. We appreciate committee staff affirming our analysis that no existing RCWs are repealed in this bill, but we do find the language of this initiative to be vague, confusing, and duplicative. Should you pass this legislation and initiative, WA wants to ensure students feel safe in their schools and that their learning needs are met. In working with our parents and partners, we are concerned that this proposed initiative is already causing LGBTQ-plus students to feel anxious, vulnerable, and targeted. School districts will need to be careful as they consider this legislation so that no student or groups of students is harmed as it is enacted. If this legislation is passed, we strongly request that the legislature provide resources to monitor the implementation and compliance of this legislation and assist school districts in interpreting the laws by providing guidance. WA members know firsthand that the fabric of a healthy school community is made up not only of dedicated staff members and engaged students, but also interested, involved parents and guardians. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next, our next panel?
We're going to not take questions in order to get all of the public that we can.
The next panel will be Tim Garchow, Melissa Petrini, and David Olson, and then following them will be Lisa Keating, Matthew Wilson, Tanya Fernandez, and Erin Lovell. Tim, good morning.
Good morning, both chairs, both ranking members, both committees, for the record. Good to see everybody here. My name's Tim Garchow. I'm the Executive Director for WASDA, for the Washington State School Directors Association. We have signed in pro on this initiative. As Senator Wellman had said earlier, families always have been and always will be a child's first teacher. And back in 2022, our members, the elected school board members from around the state, passed a belief statement that says WASDA supports parents and families as important stakeholders in their child's education. Studies show that when parents and families are involved and engaged, it has a significant impact on student academic success and wellness. Schools should reduce barriers to parent and family participation to improve connections, collaboration, partnership, and transparency. Based on our members' position, we support parents and families being engaged in their child's education. It is important for school districts to listen to the concerns of their students, their families, their staff, and their community. It is also important, in that process, to differentiate between what is actually occurring in the schools and misperception arising from social media. It's our understanding that the contents of this initiative are aligned with existing statute. Despite current law, there's still confusion and misunderstanding in the public around existing parent and family rights. Where there's confusion, problems arise. One document that's been extremely helpful has been the K-12 Parents' Bill of Rights document created by the Senate Early Learning and K-12 Education Committee. We utilize that statewide to help school districts and parents bridge that gap between where families' rights exist. As it relates to this initiative, we also hope that if the implementation of any elements are difficult to do uniformly, or if there are unintended consequences particularly for the students involved, that there be an opportunity to come back to correct those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Hello, my name's Melissa Petrini. I'm an elected school board member for the Highline School District, but I am not here on behalf of the school or the district. I'm here as a parent of six children, one with autism, one with Down Syndrome, others with other educational needs, and here hoping to determine, help make our schools a safe, inclusive, and equitable, and academically strong place for our students to thrive in. I'm here to speak in favor of House Initiative 2081. I also want to help, to help make it happen, we need to continually work to build bridges of trust with our parents and communities, especially at a time of high mental health issues, depression, and record-breaking suicide among our young ones. There's never been a time more than now where we need to work together to bring about the best solutions and perspectives from all sides, listening and learning from one another, and trusting parents to have access to important information that will help them support their own children. This initiative seeks to strengthen parental knowledge and engagement, and to promote equitable access to any and all information to help their children mentally, socially, physically, and academically thrive. This initiative seeks to promote inclusiveness of families of faith and differing sexual identity attitudes, and to trust parents who know and love their children best. This initiative will also make historically marginalized groups have confidence in speaking up on behalf of their children and their family values. This initiative will give parents the tools and information they need to help and understand those children, who are categorized into an elevated, high-risk group for mental health and suicide, can then be more proactive in watching for signs to help mitigate and intervene, which could save their children's lives. To help, to leave parents in the dark about elevated risks would be negligence, and the liability would rest upon the schools and the state for not partnering with parents fully. When our students have support from all sides, parents, teachers, and society, they will thrive in school, in their home environment, and regain confidence in the future they choose. Thank you, I hope, for your support.
I'm sorry. Would you restate your name again for the record?
Melissa Petrini.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Representative Santos, David Olson is not online, and nor is Lisa Keating, but we do have Matthew Wilson.
Oh, he's, Lisa's here? Oh, okay. Do we have David Olson also in the audience? Okay. If not, I think the panel that was just called by the senator included Lisa Keating, Matthew Wilson, Tanya Fernandez, and Erin Lovell. And perhaps, Senator, before our testifier begins, you'd like to have somebody, the next panel on deck?
Certainly. Thank you. The following panel after this one will be Diane Huffert. If you are in the room again, please come to the front seats. Marian Chacon, Mark Richard, and Julie Dahl. If any of you are present, come to the front, otherwise, prepare to be online.
Thank you. And ma'am, please begin by stating your name.
Good morning, Madam Chairs and committee members. My name is Lisa Keating. I am the President of the Tacoma School Board. I am testifying as other on I-2081 today. Our schools are welcoming healthy, our schools welcome healthy involvement from families and appreciate when parents and guardians wish to be active in their child's education. The language of this initiative outlines what our school leaders are already providing to families. In our analysis, the vagueness of some of the parental notification provisions regarding mental health will create situations where real-time decisions will have to be made in terms of meeting the needs of students in immediate crisis. We are confident that guidance can be developed that will protect the immediate interests of the student in need while balancing the immediacy of needs to inform parents and guardians of issues arising with their children. We take great pride in our wraparound student support through our comprehensive social, emotional, and physical healthcare support structures throughout the district. We know that there are concerns that this proposal may be interpreted in such a manner as to require us to tell a student in crisis to pause while we give notice to their parents. However, we are confident that we will still be able to help every child in real time and on-site, a service that we believe the families who entrust us with their children's care every day of the school year expect from us. We know that students' social, emotional, and physical needs can arise quickly and may change dramatically depending on the student grade level. This is especially true when students have a cognitive or developmental disability. Our education staff are highly trained professionals, and they should be allowed, and in some cases have a legal duty to intervene immediately when it is best interest, in best interest of the child and the student in crisis. While this specific proposal is unamenable, we will be asking for clear statewide guidance and addressing provisions that are vague and where implementation issues may arise, and strong oversight by the legislature. We look forward to partnering with the legislature and families in a functional way that supports our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Matthew Wilson online.
Matthew, you may begin, and soon as you start speaking, then we will be able to see you.
Good morning, chairs and members of this committee. My name is Matthew Wilson. I'm the Executive Director of Oasis Youth Center. I'm testifying as other. For nearly 40 years, Oasis has been providing a supportive after-school and drop-in center for LGBTQ youth in the Pierce County area. LGBTQ need a safe place to openly talk about topics that deal with their orientation. It's reassuring that both the House and Senate Council have stated that the language in this initiative does not change anything in our current laws, because over the last 10 years, the Washington Legislature has worked to put a safety net in place to protect our LGBTQ youth in our school and communities, and I'm hearing those laws and protections will hold. If there are any weaknesses in that safety net, our expectation will be that the legislature will be taking quick action to correct it. The youth are counting on the legislature and OSPI to provide clear guidance to school districts and staff on the implementation of this initiative before the legislation is enacted. The unclear, vague language in this initiative can lead to confusion and unnecessary anxiety, so we will be continuing to work with this body to make sure that immediate action is taken when necessary. This initiative cannot stand in the way of youth accessing life-saving and life-changing resources like Oasis and other LGBTQ youth centers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tanya Fernandez, Tanya, welcome. When you begin speaking, we can see you.
Good morning, Chair Santos and members of the committees. My name is Tanya Fernandez, and I am an education manager with Planned Parenthood, Great Northwest, Hawaii, Alaska, Indiana, and Kentucky. I'm also a mother. I am testifying other today. At my organization, we partner with families and schools to provide evidence-based, inclusive, and age-appropriate sexual health education, and we believe this initiative maintains Washington's existing legal protections for parents, educators, and young people. For example, parents are already permitted to opt their students out of sexual health education, and this initiative maintains that right. At Planned Parenthood Teen Council, youth are the heart of our work. My team and I work with teens, helping them learn to use their voices and share their stories. Working together, we create spaces within schools where their peers can engage and ask questions in an accepting and supportive environment. The students of today are the leaders of tomorrow, and it is my privilege to help these new leaders grow. I'm concerned that school boards and school staff might not understand the protections currently in place and cause harm to young people. Considering the confusing, the confusing language of this legislation and the uncertainty about how districts will implement it, should this, should this pass the legislature, I ask you to closely monitor implementation to ensure it is not implemented in an overly broad way. We do not want to see a chilling effect on youth who will be uncertain about what conversations will be held in confidence and who they can turn to in times of crisis. To prepare children for the future, we need to make sure they have the freedom to learn. Thank you for taking the time to hear my concerns about this unnecessary and confusing initiative.
Thank you, Tanya. And we'll go to Erin. Are you there, Erin? Online?
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Santos, Chair Wellman, and members of the committee. My name is Erin Lovell. I'm the Executive Director of Legal Counsel for Youth and Children, also known as LCYC. Last year, LCYC provided free legal services to over 850 youth across Washington. Due to racism and other forms of discrimination, youth of color and LGBTQIA+ youth are overrepresented within the systems we work and among the youth we serve. I am testifying as other, focusing on LCYC's concerns regarding this initiative as it relates to the well-being and safety of young people, especially youth who are experiencing homelessness on their own or are otherwise unsafe or unwelcome at home. First, this initiative may interfere with the young people's needs in connecting to supportive peer identity groups and critical services. The overly broad and vague language of the initiative may create a chilling effect that poses a safety risk to youth. Youth who need support outside of the home may stop confiding in and asking school staff for help, fearing a report back and retaliation at home. Additionally, if youth do confide, school employees may be reluctant to refer youth to much-needed support services. A separate concern is that this initiative outlines rights that parents already have under Washington law, specifically around how and within what timeframe a parent will be notified when their child is staying at a youth shelter or a host home, and what the role of the department plays in that process. The initiative inserts schools into an already-established process, which may lead to confusion for all involved as to which law supersedes and what protocol is to be followed. Finally, this initiative may unintentionally endanger youth who are the survivors of abuse, neglect, or sexual assault. The initiative includes language that carves out exceptions for when schools cannot share information, but the language is unclear, and it is not applied to all types of information parents may seek, creating a potential safety risk to youth. We urge the legislature to take steps to ensure appropriate oversight and future amendments, if needed, to keep all of Washington's youth safe and supported. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and we can't find Mark Richard. Are you in the room by any chance? No. Before Julie Dahl speaks, I'm going to add, the next panel will be Ping Lau, Walter Schuet, Shelley Burt, and Kathleen Lawson. If you are in the room, please come forward. And meanwhile, Julie, are you online? She's no longer online. Okay? And so, we'll go to the next panel that I've called. Ping, are you here? Is Ping Lau, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing the name correctly, but if you are, please accept the prompt, the prompt, and turn your camera and sound on. Can't find that, Walter. We have Walter. Not finding them online or present. We have any other, Shelley Burt? Not here, or Kathleen Lawson? We did have a similar problem yesterday, so that's all I have. Do you have any?
I think I might just start calling names down the line and seeing who's here. Let's see. How about Michelle Jackson, Adriana Roman, Selena Evans, and Karen Snyder? How about Harold Seal, Huey Sue, Jennifer Vasselka, Ted LaPointe, Kate Jeong, Leslie Maxwell, Pauline Docherty, Yishan Yao, Curtis Overton, Claire Shi, Elaine Badeho, Matthew We have Helen Perkins, not, oh, Hill, pardon me. Very good. Yes, Jean Hill, please proceed.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Santos, Chair Wellman, and committee members. My name is Jean Welch-Hill, and I'm speaking for the Washington State Catholic Conference. The conference is the public policy voice of the five bishops of the state, and we urge your support in passing Initiative 2081, which does reinforce parents' rights in their children's education. As stated in the initiative, parents are the primary stakeholders in their children's upbringing. Parental involvement is a significant factor in increasing student achievement, and access to student information encourages greater parental involvement, as you've heard. We appreciate Senator Wellman's and others' efforts to make information about existing parental rights more accessible, and believe this initiative is another opportunity to do so. By enumerating the rights in one location, the legislature assures parents that their rights and responsibility for their child's health and well-being does not end at the schoolhouse door. By exercising its mission to educate, the family contributes to the common good and constitutes the first school of social virtue, which all societies need. The role that parents play in the raising of their children is an important aspect of our faith, and it is supported by this initiative, and we would urge your support as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I understand Alicia Perkins is also online. As soon as you begin speaking, we should be able to see you if your camera is on.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having me this morning. My name is Alicia Perkins. I'm a mother of three OSD graduates, and I have been an avid supporter of local education for over 20 years in a variety of roles. I'm here to speak in favor of 2081. When an adult tells a child they will be keeping secrets from their parents, it is a red flag. However, this moral code is eroding. A recent example is a local teacher who engaged in a confidential relationship with a 10-year-old student regarding her gender. Public records revealed coordinated deception from the parents. The teacher instructed the child to delete emails, create private email to evade parent detection, and much more. School records required manipulation, and other staff and students were required to participate in order to further evade parent knowledge. The parents' ability to provide social, emotional, and educational support had been denied them by the omission of vital information about their child. As a result, this immigrant family removed their child from the country. This will not be an isolated incident, as long as parents are viewed as adversaries rather than partners with public schools and primary stakeholders in their children's lives, including at school. 2081 will ensure parents are not denied their ability to parent holistically, while also protecting school staff from ethical compromise. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe Jennifer Heinywithy is in the room. Yes, would you like to come forward, please?
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Heinywithy, and I'm with the Family Policy Institute of Washington. I'd like to make a note that people who have signed an opinion in for this initiative, 89% of them are pro. When we got signatures, we had to get over 400,000 signatures, and we did it. It's evident that the people have spoken. This is not politics. It's not a partisan issue. It's about parental rights. I speak to parents all over the state, and time after time, I have heard stories of their parental rights being infringed upon. I was contacted by a mother whose six-year-old daughter kept having conversations with the PE teacher about gender and sexuality. The mother told the principal, "Please stop. This violates our religious beliefs." And she was ignored. In Edmonds, seven-year-old children were taught about pronouns and sexuality. The parents were not given the opportunity to see the curriculum or opt out. They didn't even know. Another father told me, "I've been disenfranchised from my daughters because my daughters were taught that white men were the problem in this country." A teacher contacted me and told me, "My principal is telling me to lie to parents about their children's gender identity." It is evident that we need this law to reinforce the rights of parents. Time and time again, in federal and state law, it has been emphasized that parental rights are paramount in our country. And so I am asking you, listen to the people, and please pass this law. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Deirdre Huff. Are you present? And Joy, will you pronounce the name?
Gersfeld. Gersfeld.
Gersfeld. Both, I think, are online, and...
Okay. Joy, I see you. So please turn on your camera and begin speaking, and we will be able to see you.
Thank you. Good morning to the panel, and I appreciate this opportunity to be able to speak on behalf of conservative ladies of Washington this morning that is in full support of this Initiative 2081. As mentioned in an earlier testimony, there is much confusion between what is happening between state legislation, state law, and what is happening in the classroom. The truth is, school boards, teachers, and administrators are not allowing parents to opt out of curriculum that runs in against their religious beliefs, their personal beliefs, and their family core values. The truth is, is that they're being told that because of state law, their children cannot be opted out of these programs. We need Initiative 2081 to codify the rights of parents to publicly make a statement to educators, school boards, administrators, and yes, even the legislature, that parents are the one and only decision-maker in a child's life when it comes to their upbringing and how they approach worldviews. I speak to you as the mother of a child who had a plan for suicide down on paper. Neither her counselor, her teacher, or her administrator told her father and I that she intended to kill herself. We saved our daughter, not the school system. I'm also the parent of a gay child, and I can tell you without any hesitation that no one raises him to be the amazing young man that he is, other than his mother and his father. It is not the place of the legislature to step in between that, nor is it the place of school districts. I strongly urge you to pass Initiative 2081. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize. Would you please restate your name for the record?
Absolutely. Joy Gersfeld.
Thank you. And Senator Hawkins has a question for staff, and that will bring us to the conclusion of our meeting. Senator?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all the testifiers. Question for Senate Committee Services. Because an initiative to the legislature is somewhat unique, I was interested in knowing what the potential process could be, either in the joint committee, or does it, does the initiative move separately, and would it be subject to the same processes as an individual piece of legislation? So I was just wondering, for the sake of the joint committee, as well as the testifiers, if you could kind of explain the potential process.
Sure. So the initiative does move separately through each of the chambers. Currently, the House and Senate Education Committees have separately scheduled executive sessions this Friday. Initiatives aren't subject to cutoff dates, and then each chamber may separately vote on the initiative, and the initiative doesn't cross over to the other chamber like bills.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Shavers, would you please read into the record all those wishing to testify, as well as those not wishing to testify, but who have signed in?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a total of 158 people signed in to testify, 150 pro, one con, seven others. We had, we have 6,477 non-testifiers, 5,756 pro, 692 con, 29 other.
Thank you. And that closes the public hearing on Initiative 2081, and the House Education Committee is adjourned.